Call the local clerk, please call Rose.
Councilwoman Kirsten Gusteau.
Here.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilwoman Grover. Councilman Torres.
Yeah.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilman Keenan.
Yeah.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President.
Here, eight members, President. This is a regular conference of the City Council Incorporated as an annual meeting notice of 2013, which will file in the City Clerk's office posted on the bulletin board on December 27th, 2012, and sent to the Star Ledger, home New Tribune, and complies with the provision of the Open Public League Law of New Jersey. At this time, we have a public session. Any resident or taxpayer like this city councilor, any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Oh, good evening everybody. My name is Ernestine Siff. I'm being called Tina. I live at 70 Westwood Avenue, Elizabeth here. I'm making a comment. Since nine years, I started MS support group from minorities when asking medical MS. I just came back from Savannah, Georgia. Lovely weather, didn't want to come back home. I was in South Carolina too. Had all my eating food there, love it. People's everything. I noticed that Savannah, Georgia, the city is more welcoming to people with MS. Then I went to Beaufort, they're more into the MS, so I teach about MS. Now, this coming Saturday, I said invitations to several people here. We have an MS celebration. The group is nine years old, we never did that before. And I kind of jumbled it, it's about you doing what, you're doing MS celebration? Hey, we've been doing it too. So I decided, I'm gonna have MS celebration. It's gonna be at the Palmer Street Center, regular lizard. I'm gonna have everything, cake, I'm like city councilor there, and let them know, we're here, we're not going anywhere. I myself appear to be normal, but you know what's going on in my brain, to do the MS. One might wake up, can't walk, one might wake up, I can't see. That happened three times, but I got my side back. To the burger club called steroids. I did legally, not Armstrong way. So, I want everybody to know. Now, I also own MS tax for the state of New Jersey. I first was kind of shy, because who am I? I said, MSW, I said, I'm not really friendly, I'm not Dr. Lawrence Indian chief. But I went there, I said, oh wow, you're a BA? She said, yes, but I'm an MSW, so there. But Elizabeth has a very negative attitude. My first day there, two months, three months ago, the first day she said, you from Elizabeth? Yes, I am. Oh, why does this board case is so corrupt? I said, I don't know. I don't work for board education, but I work for MS. I have a disease, so don't judge me that way. More and more, I was gonna have this, such and such time. Myself, I'm the only urban area person on the board. They suburb people. And you see so much in the urban area, they say so negative about you. So I'm kind of shy doing me, but I do talk up. Ernestine, Elizabeth, you know about public transportation? I said, why you think that? You're from Elizabeth, you end up on buses there. I said, yes, I use public transportation, but pretty soon, I'm going to cancel rehab, not for drugs and drugs, drinking drugs, I'm gonna learn back to learn how to drive again. So be careful, I'll be on the road, once in four or five months. I'm gonna have four, I'm warned, I'll be driving again, okay? I have like a red car, so you see, I want a red, I want a red car, I'm worried, beep beep is me. But I'm very proud to have MS, I'm very proud of Elizabeth. I graduated Elizabeth High School, class eighty-four, then I went to Trinity State College, South College of New Jersey, and I went to Rutgers School of Social Work. So I'm not, I'm very proud of Elizabeth Beethan, but we have a negative connotation. We're not known in MS society at all, or MS foundation. This past August, I had to come to Elizabeth. We see at the Renaissance Hotel, four days and three nights, and they love Elizabeth. Your wife has no tax clothes. And you don't pay tax clothes in New Jersey, but New York you do, I still, they love that more. Thank you Tina, bring us here, you're welcome. Now you know Elizabeth. It's a beautiful hotel, everybody treated nice, and they got to know Elizabeth better. And you see a child ever news, a child selling news. We are people from Elizabeth, we are from the urban area, yes we are. I'm probably safe, I'm from Elizabeth, but it doesn't mean I act that way. So don't judge me for I'm Elizabeth Beethan. So I'm gonna hit everybody here, we have a big celebration this coming Saturday, and April 3rd, I complete Pfizer Pharmaceuticals, you know, a big thing for us. And I told Pfizer, they help young children who's interested in science. And many young ladies, she want to become a doctor, what kind of, and me, you wanna be a medical examiner? Wow, I'll be a medical examiner too. Why you did? My girl says that property for young color girl be a medical examiner. That's like two years ago, she was at Alabama. So I became a clinical scientist. She happy about that, but I'm not a medical examiner. I said, you become quest, I'll be your stand. So I forwarded to Pfizer, her resume. He said, so like, good, you know. Anyway, he said, Tina, I'm gonna score her resume to CEO of medical theory. She's a black top fit. I said, little girl, you're on your way, the plan will help you. When you come meet him, be correct. Rest nice, have your hair done, everything, talk proper. You talk to him, he's kind of short, talk to him, look at him, you know, he's kind of short in New York, but talk to him. He'll help, he'll help you. He said, you know anybody who wanna be a scientist, a doctor, anything? I don't know anybody just yet. You know anybody? The one did I count right, let me know, I forward to Pfizer. If it doesn't work on Pfizer, I forward to Telepharmaceuticals. They base the test to me. And not that, I also forward to Pfizer Pharmaceuticals. They looking for help, more people want to see science. And everybody well knows, education, we're lacking in math and science. We know, we need more people's math and science skills. We're lacking that here in Jersey, across the country. So you know anybody who want that, let me know, I forward to Pfizer, Pfizer or Telepharmaceuticals. We need more females. I love science. My role on my eighth grade science teacher, Ms. Herschel, I love her to death. That's why I came to science, because she made me, it's science is interesting. So I'm just calling, invite everybody here, and again, a jazz festival, jazz brunch, it's free. At Renaissance Hotel, one breakfast, two in the hall, it's attended too. Jazz, and lovely breakfast too, what more can you ask for? And it's free. Come on, have a nice night, go to early morning service and come have some fun, some jazz. That's March 17th. Then I gotta go, I may as well be a company.
Okay, Miss.
I do have to do.
Thank you, thank you.
No, thank you for listening to me. Hope I see everybody, so sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilman Grover.
Thank you.
Miss, let you know that we here certainly support you and all your efforts during that you put into the MS program, and I let you know that we really, really admire what you do. So keep the good work up, and we definitely, we're gonna try to, I don't say how many are gonna be there, we're gonna try to be.
That's what, I could ask. But here tomorrow, I'll be in Alabama.
You won't make the wrong weather, because we're gonna have Louis, but after that, we're gonna have one weather.
I'm down in July.
All right, have a good day.
Okay, see you, everybody. You too.
All right. Anyone else, anyone else like just city councilor, any resident or taxpayer, like just city councilor, seeing none, close the push and be.
Letter dated February 25th, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Atlantic Detroit Diesel Allison LLC, LODI New Jersey, for maintenance and repair, to include but not limited to motors and transmissions for heavy duty vehicles for various departments, for the period of February 20, 2013 through February 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated February 25th, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Air Brake and Equipment, Hillside, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair, to include but not limited to brakes and air systems for heavy duty vehicles, for the various departments, for the period of February 20, 2013 through February 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated February 26th, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to J&amp;M National Spring Company, Newark, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair for heavy duty vehicles, to include but not limited to springs, that's it, for various departments, for the period of February 20, 2013 through February 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any, right? What?
Letter dated February 26th, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Campbell Freightliner LLC, Edison, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair services for heavy duty vehicles, to include but not limited to repair of fire pumps, water tanks, and all related plumbing, structural damage to frames, and bodies of fire trucks, for the period of February 20, 2013 through February 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments?
I do, Miss. We've got a bunch of these, we've got a bunch of these in a row here. My question is, what do our mechanics do? Do you have mechanics in the fire department? Do you have mechanics in public?
I would make a comment that it probably something beyond the scope of their duties.
It's mostly equipment and supplies, although there is limited technical expertise in the event that it's necessary. So you're right, Mr. President, in the event that it's above the pay grade, for example.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Letter dated February 28, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Reed 23 Auto Mall, Butler, New Jersey, for maintenance and repairs for heavy duty vehicles for various departments, for the period of February 20, 2013 through February 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments? What?
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Avaya Inc., Newtown, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of telecommunications wired for various departments, for the period of February 1, 2013 through February 1, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $80,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to National Office Furniture Care of BFI, Jasper, Indiana, for the purchase of furniture at the firehouse located at 411 Irvington Avenue, in the amount of $7,159.20. Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the business administrator, advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist, recommends the award of a contract to Rand Construction Inc., Newark, New Jersey, for the immediate demolition of 172 Reed Street, in the amount of $19,800, and it's for information only.
Any comments? I'd just like to say that I'm hoping they follow through with this, because it needs to be done. It's something that needs to be done.
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the business administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Division of Capital Supply, Ink Bay on New Jersey, for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories, to include but not limited to brakes, filters, and spark plugs, for the Department of Public Works, for the period of February 25, 2013, through March 25, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $30,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the business administrator, requesting permission for the purchasing agent to make the necessary arrangements to auction and pound the property in the possession of the Elizabeth Police Department to be held by propertyroom.com, state career approved online auction site. The date of sale will be set by the auction company, and will be published in Star Ledger contingent upon approval of the use of propertyroom.com.
Any comments?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Okay.
Mr. President, can we find out what happens to the stuff that doesn't get sold?
Okay.
There's a lot of clothing here.
Yeah, I see a lot of clothing.
Can we donate it to Sister Jacinta or somebody like that?
The Women's Shelter, the Women's Lives.
What? I'm sorry.
The Women's Shelter.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, there's plenty of places, I hope they don't throw it out, is my fault.
Okay. We'll find out. Good point.
Letter dated March 5, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2013 state fiscal year budget by budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Any comments?
Letter dated March 5, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that in compliance with the state fiscal year 2013 appropriations act, requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Any comments?
Letter dated March 5, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing a single income by issue of general obligation bonds, and an issue of sewer utility bonds. Authorize the sale of $14,763,000 principal amount of general improvement bonds, Series 2013, and $12 million principal amount of sewer utility bonds, Series 2013. Authorize advertisement of a notice of sale, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to sell and award the bonds, determining the form and other details of the bonds, and authorize other matters relating there too.
What's this money for?
It's $26 million.
What is it for?
Just talks about capital sewer projects, but what exactly do we have in mind? I mean, every sewer project we've done so far, we've bonded specifically for that project.
Do I have to get an answer?
I don't, but I've got an answer.
You have to answer, absolutely. Can someone, you want to give?
I mean, I like to hold it and see, this is a lot of money.
Until you get the information.
But that's $26 million of debt, I mean, unless we know what we're gonna use it for. I mean, unless anybody else knows.
Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, the text says to permanently finance costs is possibility that there was some earlier bonding at a higher rate. But we need to know. It needs to be explicit, and I don't know the answer to that.
All right, we'll get the answer between now and next week. If we get it, will you be satisfied to put it on, or you want to just hold it?
Yeah, if we don't, then we'll just.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I just think it's.
You want to hold?
It's a one paragraph letter for $26 million.
Right, when you want to hold with the option.
We get more backup on a $10,000.
Before Tuesday, okay? If not, we're gonna hold.
I mean, if it's, it doesn't say, but I'm assuming, like, if it's refinancing those millions that we did borrow, with all the sewer improvements that we've done.
We will shortly get the answer. If not, we'll hold.
Letter dated February 15, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary to discharge the city's first mortgage for the owner occupied deferred payment loan program, and cancellation of the deed of remuneration restrictive covenant for the property located at 632 Port Street, in the amount of $10,150.
Any comments?
Letter dated February 20, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate, to provide an owner occupied basic program preferred payment loan to the owner of the property located at 763 Thomas Street, in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated February 21st, 2013, and the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to postpone the city's mortgage from second to third position for the property located at 84-86 First Street, in the amount of $195,000.
Any comments?
I have a question.
Councilman Grover.
Sorry. These NJH MFA loans, they total about $800,000. Are they also the same type of thing, or they forgive them if they continue?
Those aren't forgivable, they're being paid off in the refinancing, but I can double check for it.
Did you say they're forgivable?
If, he says no.
You're not.
I could be wrong, but I think it would have to be stated.
I have some questions.
It says in the second paragraph, forgivable.
No, the city's loan is, that's not my question.
No, he's talking about the New Jersey.
There's two more on the bottom that are worth 800, so basically, it's about a million dollars.
You're talking about the housing?
Yeah.
So we'll get that affirmation?
If you just find out. I believe those are not forgivable, but I'll find out.
Okay. Councilman, you want to do the statement?
No, that's fine, no, that's fine. I don't, I don't want to hold it up against.
Okay, I do want to, okay.
Because that's a million dollars on this property, I don't know if it's worth a million dollars.
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated September 11, 2012, between the Elizabeth Packers and the city for operating course in the amount of $7,000, specifically to extend the term of the contract from June 30, 2013, to December 31, 2013.
Any comments?
Yes.
I'm gonna have to.
Do that on Tuesday.
Tuesday, next week. So hold that, hold that. Let me mark it.
Make a note.
Any other comments? So hold, put that on.
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, recommending awarding a contract to Prestige Environmental Inc., Somerset, New Jersey, to serve as a license site remediation professional for the Midtown redevelopment area, for the period of March 13, 2013, to March 12, 2014, at a total cost of $175,000, unless further authorized by your honorable body, which shall be paid from the $400,000 United States Environmental Protection Agency grant.
Any comments?
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached, and may part hereof, for the boarding of said properties in the amount of $1,780.57.
Comments?
Letter dated March 4, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Endor Services Inc., North Brunswick, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services on a time and material basis for actual time and expenses, in connection with the hurricane sandy damage reconstruction along the waterfront, at a cost not to exceed $657,000 plus reimbursable. Fees are potentially reimbursable by FEMA at 75% of the final cost.
Any comments?
Mr. President, so we're being reimbursed for this? 75%. How much?
$75,000.
Okay, Councilman, so I'll be there. Anybody else?
Letter dated March 4, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of change order number one for the contract awarded to PM Construction Corp. for the Third Avenue Flood Control Project, in the amount of $1,617,600, to provide further to reduce the number of utility relocations, fill void beneath proposed pipe at SAGS and existing pipe, and the removal of wood planks beneath the existing sewer. Test pits in excess of the contract quantity required to field local utilities, allowance for analysis, transportation, and disposal of contaminated soil, at an additional cost of $311,439.65, within the original contract amount to $1,617,600.
Any comments? Yeah, Councilman.
Who's gonna supervise all this work that it gets done, before we pay them off? Who's actually in charge?
Hatch, Hatch Mommy, that's the project engineer.
And they are on a site, or they're just on paper?
Absolutely, they're on site every day.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I find out, if we can, who was the second lowest bidder on this project? And what was your bid?
The second lowest bid?
Seems to me, this guy's went from the lowest bidder to probably the highest with this change order.
We'll get that information.
And I have another question.
Councilman, I catch Councilwoman.
The PNP dot M, construct.
Constructive.
Is this the first time they've done a job for us?
I don't think so. Is it?
I think it can once before. I'm not positive.
I'm not tied to either, but I don't.
Can you check them?
Absolutely.
I've seen this before, they not be in our town, I don't know.
Yeah. But we'll get that information for you, Councilman.
Okay, I appreciate. And I, yeah, I have the same question that Councilwoman Mazza have.
Mazza?
Yeah, regarding, who oversee these jobs? Because some of these jobs, these are not to be desired. Like at the end, you have all these freaking change orders, the job is not right, they gotta go back. Like the roofing over there at Peterstown, you know, we bid that out, and then they still have all these problems, and it's supposed to be a project manager over there, and they still have, they still don't do the right thing.
One of the things, one of the things when they, because I've been through process myself, one of the things is when you, when you put out a bid, and generally, when you get a bid out, there's unforeseen incident takes place, that really not, you just don't know. And when you start a new job, and those unforeseen things happen to, use the word, pop up, they have to be addressed. And that's part of what happened, I'm telling you, that's what happened all the time with these type of project, because I've been through it before, in my experience when I was working for the campaign, and I know that's what happened. It's just unforeseen incident come up.
Yeah, but assumption simple, like when you do a roof, you don't lay the right stuff, I mean, that's not all unforeseen, that's a professional aptitude to do the right job, to do the job right the first time.
Yeah, but I think most of this.
Those are two different issues, you know. I mean, yeah, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Letter dated March 4, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Meta Architects, Mountainside, New Jersey, to provide professional architectural services in connection with the engine company number six, feasibility study, at a cost not to exceed $10,500.
Any comments? All right, I'd just like to make comments on this. Most of you might not know, we had a fire, it happened in this, in this engine house, or I guess, a few months back, on Catherine and Jackson, and naturally, they was talking about trying to tear this firehouse down, which I really, really oppose, and we're not gonna tear it. So we're doing a feasibility study here, to find out if it, A, is it feasible to refurbish it, or B, do we tear it down to build a new one? Because, let's face it, new fire engine and apparatus all has changed dramatically over the last two years or so, and that firehouse over there just won't hold the biggest apparatus that we have on hand. So this is what this feasibility study is all about. I will have to see tape two, a new fire house there. But there again, once the feasibility study come back, we'll have all those answers before us. Either A, we renovate it, with some additional changes here and there, or tear it down to build a new one. So once we do that, we're, we're gonna go. Yeah, Councilman.
Mr. President, I just hope we get our communication straight, because when the fire occurred, and when I spoke to a member of the administration, they said, in all due speed, they were going to fix it and get it back open, so that was the information that I conveyed to the residents in that community to call. So now we're gonna go backwards and do a feasibility study, and see what's up, da-da-da. I don't have a problem with that, but I just need to make sure the lines of communication are current, and, you know, appropriate. So when I convey things back to the residents, it's not like I'm not giving them the correct information.
Okay.
Because I remember over a month ago, you know, we talked about, and we said they were gonna try to open up as soon as possible, because the people are concerned in the community. Now you're talking about they're doing a feasibility study. So it's not gonna be open up as soon as possible, if they're gonna do a feasibility study. So I need to know, so I can let the residents know who are concerned in that area.
Yeah, likewise, I am also, Councilwoman, I mean, I, as a matter of fact, I'll start meeting again this coming Thursday, and those that attend that meeting, I will address this accordingly, and, you know, like you and others in that community, aren't anxious to get that back up and running again, and make sure that we have protection there in that community, because we don't have another fire engine within close town, in that media area, and it's like over North Avenue, so, you know, I'm pushing to get this open.
So can we find, can we do some type of timeline, like how long?
Yeah, I want to take, yeah.
For the feasibility study, what they're gonna do.
Well, let you know, I'm pushing hard, Councilwoman, to make sure that they take tomorrow, because I want to get it up and running, that's my bottom line, so, okay.
Letter dated March 6, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties, in the amount of $2,388.29.
Any comments?
Letter dated March 1, 2013, from the Police Director, recommending awarding a contract to Mark Seeger, Milburn, New Jersey, Dr. John J. Shannon, Madawan, New Jersey, and Betty C. McLendon, from Clark, New Jersey, to serve as police psychiatrist, psychologist for the Elizabeth Police Department, for the period of March 13, 2013, to March 12, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $13,000 per doctor, unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Any comments?
Why we have to go over to Madawan? There's no one in the area. If something wrong with the police or fire, you know. If something wrong with the police or fire, you know, doesn't make any sense. You got all these doctors up there, you're gonna take a way down the road. You have no sense.
Councilwoman, these, these doctors have performed in this capacity for, for several years.
Not from Madawan. You haven't used her before.
Uh...
The doctor from Madawan?
That's Dr. uh, Dr. Shannon, I believe, for, for a couple of years, I'm not sure exactly how long.
I don't remember that, I don't remember that address. I remember Prince. I don't think.
Don't do what?
Jesus.
No, I'm not kidding regarding going to Madawan. I don't recall that, um, Mr. President, so I'll, I'll look into it.
Recall going to Bayonne.
Okay, Councilman?
Mm-hmm.
I say you okay?
Bayonne, address that we send a cop for psychiatric reevaluation.
Okay, Bayonne, yeah, Bayonne.
Bayonne is to be one of the sites.
Bayonne, yeah, Milford would be there for two. But Madawan, to me, it's more...
You're gonna go play golf?
Are we okay? Yes, Mr. President, okay.
I'll look into it.
Letter dated March 4, 2013 from the Police Director, requesting to, permission to establish handicap facilities. Okay, Second Ward, 10 and 1/2 Royal Place, personalized.
Put it on.
Okay. Third Ward, 83 West Field Avenue?
That's East of Cherry, though.
East of Cherry.
That should be my words.
Oh, that's, um, okay.
You can put it on.
You can put it on.
Thank you.
It's four. Okay. Let's see, Sixth Ward, 848 Martin Street.
Put it on all, please.
Third Ward, 733 Jersey Avenue, personalized.
That's fine.
That's fine. First Ward, 155 Franklin Street.
You could have put it on all.
Fifth Ward, 818 Monroe Avenue.
Hold.
First Ward, 32nd Street.
Hold.
First Ward, 229 South Second Street.
Hold.
Okay, deletion. Let's see, 145 Smith Street, 441 Maple Avenue, 1 Pine Street, 517 Marshall Street, 618 South Park Street, and 21 South Second Street.
Mr. President, there's one there that says disapproved, I'd like to have that one put on, I have a circumstance there that I'd like to...
Which one's that?
It's at the bottom.
741...
741...
741 Murray?
You want that?
I have that one for you.
Okay.
Okay. You have Fair Rental Housing Board minutes of January 16, 2013.
Just before we close the session, uh, guys asked me last week about, about who was taking duty in place, who took duty in place, I don't think Lieutenant Bobby Marcus. Uh, he was a very nice police officer. Uh, I thought I would, I tried to have him to meet us tonight, but because of unforeseen things, he just did not make it. But eventually he will come over and meet with us and abuse himself to each, each person here.
We don't have anything to talk about.
No, I'm not talking about for the, for the traffic. I understand, I, I, that's a different, the traffic division's talking about. Any guys who go place duty? Lieutenant Bobby Marcus, uh, he is a very nice guy, uh, and he looked forward to working with us, okay? Motion to go in close session, please?
No more.
Whereas the open public meetings, Act CL 1975, Chapter 231, commits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter formed within the attorney's prime privilege, therefore, the section one, the method involving the confidentiality of the meeting no longer requires that confidentiality. Send the minutes, send the minute.
We have initial close session.
Now, therefore, may it resolve that the public be excluded from this meeting. Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti?
Here.
Councilwoman Questa?
Here.
Councilwoman Grover?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
She was under the impression that I had some concerns, but I told her all my concerns were satisfied and, um, her detailed explanation, so I was hoping that we can put those back on, uh, because the inspectors not only work for the, um, Health Department, but they do a lot of things in conjunction, uh, with our Police Department. And I know they have not, um, ordered cars for maybe about 17 years, and some of the cars that they do have, they're extremely old, you can't even find replacement parts for them. So, in order to, um, keep our Health Department running and, um, allow them to aid our Police Department when necessary, I'm hoping that the body would, um, allow those cars to go on so we can vote on it, so the employees will have the tools necessary to do their jobs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, yes, and you, uh, respond to that, Councilwoman. I, I did have a conversation with the, the Health Director, uh, and I still hold today, I said to her, if she was talking about, we were told at the meeting, and I still said to her, a replacement, a placement, replacement for one work, but she had additional, that's where I had the problem with. An additional was where she asked for additional. So, she wants to replace whatever she had on the books to replace, she says she gonna, I don't know what, what this, this might be from her, yeah, I'm not sure. Uh, she said she's gonna give me a list of, of cars to replace.
I'm not, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not going, um, to be tit for tat in terms of, the administration told us there are replacement cars versus the fact that they needed cars, they're short of cars and they cannot do the work. So, I know this body doesn't wanna stop the employees from doing their work and, you know, they need the cars. The Police Department, the Police Director is asking us also to grant them their cars. And I, we don't hold up anybody else's cars, um, on this body, whether it's police, whether it's public works, never. So, I don't know what the issues are regarding, um, the Health Department receiving cars to do their work. They inspectors, they need cars to go out to inspect. I don't know what the issues are unless there's some other underlying issues that we don't know about. They have not ordered cars in almost 17 years, and you can check the books on that, Mr. President.
Yeah, I, I hear you. Okay.
So, are we gonna put them back on? Do we need to take a consensus to put them back on so that the inspectors can do the job, do their work? Or what are we gonna do?
Well, like I said, I...
Can we call for consensus? Because since I was one of the main ones who had the questions, my questions have been totally answered.
Well, I also had question, also, Councilwoman.
What, what are your questions?
I just said, I, I was told, and the question was, there was, were they, uh, replacement? And they answered, yeah, they was replacement. And as we got the information from last week, uh, as I read the information that I received, they were not replacement, they was, uh, they was additional. And that's where my problem, where I had to repeat again.
I know, but the Director, no disrespect, the Director gave a two-page...
I received those same...
Information that says why, why every car was needed. If they have in their stock cars that are 1987 and 1989, that's common knowledge that those cars need to be replaced. You can't even find cars for cars.
You may have missed my point, Councilwoman, I'm not disputing replacement.
I might, so why, why am I not, why, what's the real reason?
I'm not disputing replacement, Councilwoman, uh, and I said to you again and again, uh, that's where, you asked me my, you asked me a question, I answered it to the best of my ability.
Right.
And whether you, whether you want to hear that, uh, is, is, is what I'm telling you. I'll repeat again, last week, when you made the statement, I also, also made the statement, also, you asked your lunch, she has it on record, because we...
Well, actually, it was two weeks ago.
Well, a couple of weeks, couple of weeks, whatever case may be.
Since you've been so literal, it was two weeks ago.
Whatever it was, Councilwoman, we both had the question, I asked, was, and Dawn was here, we said they were replacement, and I'll repeat again.
When did you tell me?
The information that I received was not replacement, there was one, I believe, replacement on that list.
I'd be happy to clarify.
Yeah, would you clarify?
Rest of it was, was, was additional.
Since the Director wasn't here to speak for herself.
Mr. President, if you wish me to clarify it, Ken?
Go ahead.
Two weeks ago, I mentioned that the, that there were replacements. Um, I hold steady to that, that these are replacements. Uh, there may be an additional one or two cars above the replacement as, as the memo from the Health Director illustrates. The recommendation from administration is that they are necessary for the efficiency of the Health Department and will reiterate that request.
Can we, can we, I, I still don't have that list that said the replacement. Do we have that list as a replacement?
I, I think I would refer to the, if there are two memos, memos from the Health Director, the first memo, which I think if you read down further, it talks about, uh, probably four or five of the vehicles that were requested are replacements, Mr. President.
The cars were listed, they were on the replacement list?
They are.
Okay. I'll reiterate again. If we, if I, if I find them there, we'll entertain them. Go on.
Mr. President, I just wanna say that caution that even if they're not there to your, um, liking, um, it just brings about form around, um, within city employees where they don't have the necessary tools to do their work. And I know that's not the intent of this body to put an undue stress on the employees for political reasons.
Just, uh...
It is, okay? So, and I'm hoping that you can be big enough, um, to see to it that, you know, we should not, um, force trade when it comes to allowing the, um, the employees to do their job.
Okay.
That's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Torres?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Good.
That was just one issue.
Okay.
Um, the other issue, I don't know if everyone else received this letter, but I did from, um, retired fire captain Wayne Spikes, who talks about the, um, dissent decree order, consent, I'm sorry, consent decree order, uh, talks about the diversity of the workforce for the Fire Department. Um, he is asking, um, George, Mr. Strong, that where is the city's position regarding the dissent, consent decree order? You know, that's, it was a, um, a case with the Justice Department, talking about the diversity within the Police and Fire Department.
Yeah, if you could get me a copy of the, of the letter, I'll look into it.
Yeah, can you, 'cause he, he addresses the letter to, um, our Law Director, our Law Department Director, but then I somehow, or someone was given some...
Copy as well, I didn't get, I didn't get that, I don't know if anybody else got it.
Did anybody?
You guys want to just distribute?
Yeah, distribute, okay, okay, thank you. 'Cause I just saw, and I, okay, that's all I have.
Uh, Councilman Torres, do what?
Yes, Mr. President, I just got, uh, I had the opportunity to, to go visit some residents that filled out the application for a hearing cap, and I would like to, uh, submit this to Yolanda so she can put these three on.
Okay, thank you.
That's about it.
Councilman Keenan?
Pass.
Uh, Councilman Grover?
Pass.
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to have two memorial, one for, uh, 42-years-old young man, Carlos Eduardo Figueroa Jr. I'll give you the information to, uh, Yolanda, and the other one for, uh, Mrs. Venturini, D. like Invicta E-N-T-U-R-I-N-I, I will give you the information.
That sounds familiar.
And, uh, yeah, she used to be the librarian for San Anthony School. And very nice lady. And, uh, I have an illegal conversion to, converting a second-floor apartment, number 15 John Street, into a, uh, an illegal rooming house. The, uh, the owner himself uses one room and he's sub-renting all the rooms around on the second floor. And, uh, on the first floor, there is a resident, so that's something to be taken care of. I did mention also to Maria Carvalho, the zoning office, to see what she could do. I'm sure she's gonna do something, but I wanted to be a record that, you know, Republic request. Furthermore, 220 South Street, it's been a, uh, a burden for over a year, you know, fire, before the fire, people drinking loud music throughout the summer, the winter, the Police Department, probably, there's so many times. I would like to get, I don't know, what, what kind of law, not that we have a law that we could actually demolish this particular building, it's a nice order in the area, right by the church. And, uh, you know, sorry, if you could do any, uh, power within as a president of City Council to have the proper authority to check it out and then allow to demolish this particular, uh, program, 220 South Street, Mr. President.
Okay.
And, uh, that's about it.
Councilman Questa?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to request a memorial for, uh, Marge Devaney, Senator Lestion's sister, who passed away early this afternoon, 30 years ago.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Sedanier?
Just two things. One, if we could have a letter sent to the Fire Department on Overton Avenue, uh, they keep parking some of their fire vehicles on the crosswalk, and I know it's been an issue I've brought up in the past, but anytime I see like the kids walking back to Open Plaza, they have to walk on the street, and it shouldn't be the, you know, the vehicles taking up that space. Uh, the other thing, I know that the signage in front of the school says, "No parking during school hours, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM." I wasn't sure if that was changed in ordinance, just because the school hours have changed. Um, I know they officially start at 7:30, and once the kids, like the second dismissal is 4:45, pretty much. Um, I know, I believe Councilman Mazza brought that up in the past.
I requested a couple of years ago and still is not done, the sign wasn't changed. The Police Department Traffic Division was supposed to come up with some kind of, uh, results, and, uh, and then Republic Works took them up, was signed to change from 8:30 to 7:30 in the morning.
Sure, so it needs changed from 7:30?
To 7:30.
Seven.
I would almost say 7:05.
This is seven.
What, what is the time?
Um, I would say 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
7:00 AM to, uh...
5:00 PM, just to give them that cushion.
And right now, I say 8?
Right now, it's 8 to 4, and I reached out to, um, John Chapani, but he said that it has to go through ordinance to officially change the signage. But they, um, they officially, officially start school at 7:30, all the parents come at 7:00.
Sure.
Um, so 7 to 5 is appropriate, so that they would be able to change the signs.
And that's at all the schools?
All the schools, all the cities.
Okay.
Yeah, so a request to have that changed.
Okay, we'll look at you and see what can you get it.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. A couple of years ago, we requested to do it, so two years went by, I don't know which department got stuck, but...
You have to do it by ordinance.
By the ordinance.
You just gotta double the change.
I don't know.
Then the Law Department has to do it.
The Law Department was supposed to do, and Traffic was...
I'll ask, I'll ask George, would you look into it? And see if he can draft that up?
Because I...
And if you guys don't mind, can we get that drafted up? Maybe get it...
Remember, was a request, Mr. President?
I'd have to look into it, I'm not sure if it's governed by state statute or not, so that's, I mean, that's, that's the real issue.
Okay. I mean, it's... Would you convene with me, see if you can...
Yeah.
I'll do it as an expedition. Okay, thanks, George.
Thank you, that's it.
Uh, Councilman, uh...
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you.